So that's just.
Oh, I guess. Well, think about it is to.
There are other.
Yeah, policies center. Healthy. This is between. They're in my tranche.
Bruce could join everybody you thought about.
And then I can't remember. Sam ended up with, but we maybe six or seven.
Truck.
I think six groups. We're excited about. I love.
When you think about it.
It was a couple of others.
That's a pretty high grade.
So what are the next steps?
What, sir?
You're gonna have to get like water parks. Get that or something.
I think Michael is on on the screen. Hello, Michael, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Yep, we can hear you. Thank you. As you all know, Bruce is gone on vacation and so I'll be running the meeting tonight. With that being said, I just want everybody to know that I think tonight, not real familiar, I don't think I'm gonna use Teams if everybody's okay with that.
What?
Everybody's all right with it.
About time.
Please do not take.
You can tell the old guy's going, yeah, baby.
Here is my, and here's my caveat, please do not think I'm trying to undermine the mayor by any by any means.
He's probably watching. This guy.
I'm just used to being looking and writing down the names and and I will not forget Lisa. That was my memo last year. I continue to forget her, so. So I will kind of keep my eyes open for you and and write you down on my list like I normally do.
Everybody forgets me. Steve forgot, but you and Bruce.
I will not today. So anyway, thank you all, I appreciate that. So we do have quite a bit, quite a bit, we've got a few items though on our pre-meeting. So I'm gonna pass it over to Carter and we're not gonna do Teams demonstration, are we?
I heard that that might be delayed, yes.
We will wait till Bruce comes back for Teams demonstration. All right. NAPA IBS.
Save just five minutes.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everybody. It's nice to be with you. NAPA IBS, that is an integrated business solution that we've been using now for five years, which is hard for me to believe, but certainly with regard to the management of our inventory out at the garage, the parts capture and the ability to move vehicles in and out of the facility much quicker than we used to. We tend to believe that this is a good arrangement for us to continue and maintain into the future. Furthermore, however, as you listen to the brief presentation today, I would suggest that perhaps we may need to extend this model to outside of just a fleet application, but rather to also the supplies and parts that parks uses and buildings and structures and and continuing a more expanded notion beyond what we're familiar with, you know, to this point. So with that in mind, however, I'd like you to be able to have the opportunity to ask some questions with regard to what we've learned over the last five years and and give Mr. Coriel and Ms. Belsor a run for their money as it relates to the storied history of this private-public partnership that we think is innovative and very useful with regard to the way we used to operate prior to the five-year, you know, history that we've developed now. So with that, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may turn the time over to the aforementioned, I would appreciate it.
Do you wanna come with me? Okay.
Moral support. Emotional support.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, councilors. I'm Dan Coriel. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so exactly like Carter said, we are at the end of our five-year agreement with NAPA IBS and the Fleet Services Center. So you've seen the memo that was attached to the agenda and just a quick synopsis going over everything. We can look at the mechanic efficiency, how it's changed from pre-NAPA IBS to post-NAPA IBS. So pre-NAPA IBS mechanic efficiency was gauged on each time a piece of equipment or a vehicle comes in. Let me double check in here. How many work orders were generated? So before NAPA IBS, we did a lot of work on parts lookup, delivery, driving around, picking up the parts and bringing it back to the service center. Now, NAPA does all of that for us, so our generated work orders have increased by about 200 each year, showing more vehicles and equipment in and out. The fleet readiness is gauged by zero to five days on how quick vehicles are serviced at the service center and then put back out into into different city divisions where they came from. So zero to five days had increased, I'm sorry.
Interesting.
By about 150 per year, so 1,600 work orders were generated from zero to five days prior to NAPA IBS and post-NAPA IBS, about 1,750 work orders are going out zero to five days. Freight was a really big one, we used to spend about $50,000 to $60,000 each year on freight, on parts being delivered to the service center. Now, NAPA has been able to, with their purchasing power, absorb a lot of that and buy in bulk and so it has went down tremendously to about $7,000 per year. Tires. So tires. Tires is a very, very big push for NAPA IBS. They have a big buying power, they have different contracts the city isn't able to get as well. Now, city local governments do have good buying contracts, but teamed up with NAPA IBS, it just becomes twofold. So over the past five years, we've saved about $200,000 plus in just tires. So without that NAPA IBS contract, that's another savings that we have going for us right now. Part obsolescence was a big one. So when it was, five years ago, the city of Casper had an inventory of about $500,000 and a lot of the parts were for pieces of equipment we didn't even own anymore. So it was a big push for NAPA to get rid of those and then NAPA take over the entire inventory. Right now, the city of Casper owns $0 in inventory, it's all on NAPA IBS. They've got about $450,000 of current up-to-date inventory. All of our inventory is now gone, we changed it to a code called nine L O and we were able to use what we still had in the city and then we went to the surplus auctions and got rid of the stuff that we don't own anymore. Dan, can I ask you a quick question? Yes, sir. So since they have, since they have it in their inventory, is that an automatic savings as well for us? Not only saving the inventory, but we just space, all that stuff? Correct, and that is even a good push to go into a different division if you were to look at buildings and structures or, well, stick with buildings and structures, if you needed a pump for a pool, instead of that being on city inventory and the city having to purchase that, NAPA will purchase that, have it on the shelves and then when we're ready for it, that work order will kick in, we can charge it out to that division and then off it goes, but that's not any burden on the city until. Thank you, thank you, sorry to interrupt you. No, thank you. That is all I have. Any questions for Dan? Carter?
Oh, I, oh, yes, I'm, yeah, oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Kyle.
I don't, well, I have one question, I'm a big fan of the program. I like looking over, like you said, 80% reduction in freight charges, increased number of work orders, zero in inventory, 30% savings in tire purchases, so I'm really excited about the idea of extending this to other departments. Are we looking at NAPA being our vendor for like parks as well or would it be a different vendor that would? NAPA and the fleet makes sense to me, but I guess I didn't know they played around with pumps.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, counselor, the the reality is, NAPA could provide that solution in those worlds as well. And that's mostly because of their 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 network, as it were, with regard to all things, pieces and parts. And so my understanding is, would you, would you guys agree with that?
Yes, they've indicated and they are talking to their places and sales associates who do that in other areas nationwide, so this is their purchasing power, they can do certain supplies with buildings, they need supplies, of course, they can't do every, you know, specific pool part, but again, that buying and purchasing power, they have that ability to do outside of just the.
Delight me that you wanna.
Counselors, thank you. So one thing to remember is that NAPA IBS is integrated business solutions is an arm of the NAPA fleet part kind of model and so they really deal in inventory and it doesn't matter what the inventory is. And so that is why we are in fact excited for the opportunity potentially to expand into my department and look at buildings and structures and the ability to to have them inventory parts that we use regularly so that they're available, so we can avoid freight charges, so that we can increase our productivity.
Questions? I got Jenna and then I got Steve. Did you have one, Lisa?
I was just gonna ask too, it's like that helps with downtime, right? Cause it's available usually regularly, so it's less downtime of like pools, right?
Steve, do they keep all of these parts here locally or do they have them overnighted in and then delivered to you?
Mr. Mayor, counselor, yes, they both. So if it, most of the time parts are in Reno or Nashville or something, but they're usually overnighted.
Isn't it true that they could even go to NAPA stores sometimes if they don't have it in the warehouse and they may have to provide.
Yes.
Makes sense.
I was just trying to figure out how, who had the the inventory, so to speak, and so the inventory is not actually local, but they are paying the freight to get it here rather than us paying the freight to get it here.
Mr. Mayor, counselor, yes, they do have a large inventory in the service center though as well.
Okay, in our service center?
In our service center.
Oh, okay, so you're using our space, but it's their inventory?
Correct.
Okay.
So they have a software named Pans and it is actually the inventory adjuster counter. So when there is a certain amount of items purchased, that knows, okay, we need to order six more of these or so, so it is always up to date in our warehouse.
That's what I was trying to figure out was where this inventory was and so if you needed, you know, another lug nut someplace, they aren't having to overnight it in, it's actually in your warehouse and it just shows up on the inventory, when you get low enough, they reorder, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Brandon, then Jenna.
Actually, I have a two-part to answer your question. When we toured, we got to see where they kept most of the stuff in the fleet, it's just like a store. Do we get to keep the lady that was our lady that's now their lady? So then my next part was when we had done the tour, we had talked about how nobody else had put in a bid and NAPA was the only one that wanted. Are we getting inquiries where we should be considering or are we just still sticking with that's the one place that wants to do it now and we're happy with them?
Mr. Vice Mayor, counselor, yes, that is, great question, we've got no other inquiries, nor, my opinion is that we should look, I think NAPA has done excellent.
That's what I hear.
Jenna?
I was just gonna pretty much echo what Brandy said, but she said it first, so when we toured it, it was, I know, I'm like, you got it. But it was, if anybody else like tours over there, it's amazing facility and how they operated over there, it's kind of cool to have it all in parts right there, it was nice to see.
Amber?
I would just like to add that I would absolutely be supportive of expanding this where possible, I think it makes really good sense from a variety of standpoints and just to draw folks' attention if they haven't checked in the packet, they do utilize a lot of local vendors when they're sourcing items, so Wyman Machinery, Good Your Tire, Home Ax, Casper Tire, Greiner, Han and Equipment, so, you know, still plenty of business staying here locally as well, which is important, I think it looks like they do a good job of that.
Any other questions for the dynamic duo? Thank you guys, appreciate it. Yeah, I would echo that I think it's a great thing to expand too and I think it's really good for for our organization, so thank you.
Do we, one last follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have any idea at this time what sort of savings or anything we could expect? If we were to expand. Roll it out everywhere? Do we have any ballpark?
A lot.
We've just been on tires every year, isn't it?
Do you know, Carter?
You know, I'd be reluctant to try to speculate at this point, but that certainly would be the analysis we'd wanna do as we get into an expansion concept here, so.
But it would be a savings of some sort.
I think so, I mean, certainly if you consider staff time as money, at the very, very least, we're gonna see that and I'm thrilled for that, you know? Freight as well, I think will be transferable as a savings possibility too, so.
Thank you, thank you, counsel. Next item, liquor ordinance changes, Carter?
Great, hey, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Can I ask, just to clarify a question?
Of course.
Carter, you probably said this at the beginning, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, the conversation we just had was about, the presentation was about an inventory system, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, counselor, I I may not be understanding your question correctly.
I just wanna clarify what they were giving the presentation about, you mentioned something about the city acquiring something, but I didn't catch all of that. Were you talking about the city acquiring an inventory management system?
Thank you, counselor.
Similar to what NAPA uses?
The counselor, and feel free to correct me if I get this wrong, okay, but the city isn't really taking ownership of any of the NAPA systems in order to make this partnership work.
Right.
But rather using their parts, their purchasing power, as well as their people to do what it is that we need or used to do, as it were, in the form of invoicing, in the form of holding parts and chasing down parts, ordering parts.
Right, well, that that part I understood. What I'm trying to clarify is, you, in your introduction before the two people made their presentation, was something about the city improving or adding something?
Okay.
For for use in more apartments, I think is what I.
Yes, yes, sir, and counselor, my apologies, I didn't get the.
That's okay.
On track here. Yeah, the the idea would be that indeed we would expand this beyond fleet and incorporate it into parks and buildings and structures, primarily Zalima's Department, and in the future, maybe others if if there's those possibilities that that arise.
Okay, so my next, my next question is about, and I don't wanna get too far in the weeds, but so stop here, but is this about acquiring a system similar to what NAPA uses that could be used in, say, Zalima's Department that would do the same function? Is it, and is it, is it outsourcing to a private enterprise or is it still, would that part of it be managed within the city?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, excuse me, counselor, what we're really talking about is renewing the service relationship that we have with NAPA IBS and expanding that service to encompass more of our purchasing and invoicing services throughout other departments. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you betcha, you betcha, thank you.
Sorry to take a while to get there, I just wanted to make sure I missed it.
That's okay.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Liquor ordinance changes, we've got about five minutes and we've got about 15 minutes worth of stuff, so.
Well, and I would suggest, Mr. Vice Mayor, if it's okay with you, we can certainly bump the number four item and obviously we've already bumped the number one item to another time, so.
Perfect, if we could do that, is counsel okay with that?
Yeah.
We do.
Okay, great, and and for that, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll go ahead and punt to the clerk and her team to walk us through this item.
Your honor, members of council, this is my liquor licensing specialist, licensing specialist, Carla Latch, she took lead on doing all the ordinance changes and writing those and so she is going to present on the changes we'd like to make tonight and just explain what they are and the purpose that we're suggesting they be changed. Thank you.
Welcome, Carla.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, councilors, we are asking for two changes tonight to our liquor license ordinances. One is to the hours of operation for our limited liquor license dealers and the second is allowing one person to hold more than one liquor license. The hours of operation used to be Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, sorry, for our, all of our liquor dealers except for limited. Sundays was 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. When the state liquor division removed the restriction for hours of operation, the city of Casper changed our liquor, our hours of operation to 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, seven days a week, except our limited liquor dealers, they can begin serving at nine. Our limited liquor dealers are golf courses and VFWs. We would like to switch that to have all of our liquor licenses under the hours of operation of 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Sunday. Our second one is in 2021, our liquor license, our state statute liquor licenses went through a major overhaul. One of the changes was allowing more than one person, excuse me, allowing a person to own more than one liquor license. That was inadvertently left out of our municipal code when we did all the changes and this amendment would change that to reflect the state statute. That's it.
Questions for Carla, city clerk's office, anything? Yeah, Kyle?
Thanks, Ray. And I imagine if we, it's on our agenda to establish public hearings, so I imagine we'll have three readings to discuss this further, so I can reserve that for them, but I was just curious, is is the intent just to make it standard across the board or were you receiving, you know, our municipal golf course, do they believe they can make more money if they allow those sales before 9:00 AM? I'm just curious, the motivation, thanks.
When we went, sorry, Vice Mayor and councilors, when we changed the hours of operation, it was my understanding that it was going to be across the board because we did have some retail liquor license customers come and talk to us, we did have some golf courses come and talk to us about early tee times on Sunday, they can't start serving till nine, sometimes an early tee time is 7:00 AM. And the retail liquor license holders wanted to, because somebody's going fishing at 6:00 AM on a Sunday, they wanted to be able to sell them beer or whatever their liquor choice is.
Thank you. Lisa?
I guess I was curious, so if it doesn't state currently that one person can own it, then how is like, for instance, the Johnson Group is able to own multiple liquor licenses?
Very good question. Mr. Vice Mayor, councilors, a previous city attorney, probably previous, previous city attorney, when we went to talk to him, it's basically entity and what they have, the only thing they have to do is just change the LLC, they can go to like Fuzzy Tacos, Johnson Restaurant Group, that's how they interpreted, was that's how they got around it and the states agreed and then they took it out of their state statute and then.
Other questions for Carla? Thanks for the update, appreciate that. Okay, anything on the agenda review? No, sir. Nothing, counsel? Alrighty, thank you so much, 6 o'clock?
42, send me most.
Good evening. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. Also remind you that council meetings are televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. I now call the March 21st, 2023 regular council meeting to order. Please note that, there's a feedback coming. Please note that councillor Bond is attending the meeting virtually. The Chair to entertain a motion to by minute action excuse the absence of Mayor Nell.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Pollack, seconded by councillor Cathy. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councillors voting aye, the motion passes.
We'll take a five-second break. Is that better? Oh, yeah, that's better. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's that? Yeah. Is it the sound system? Sounds better. Should we try? Okay. Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the March 21st, 2023 bills and claims is audited by City Manager Napier.
Second.
Moved by councillor Gamroth, seconded by councillor Inga Breton. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote.
Oh, you're nil.
Is that okay? You got it? I don't know, I kept hitting it going, why isn't Ray doing anything? Jeez. Please recur at the vote.
With all councillors voting aye, the motion passes.
Believe it or not, I've done this before. Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we do ask the following. Please state your name. Direct all comments and questions to the mayor, in this case, the vice mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters. They will be referred to the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by councillors. Presentations are limited to five minutes, and any duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period, so please hold your comments until we reach that time. Mr. Step?
Good evening. Ryan Step, 1440 Ivy Lane, Casper, Wyoming. Many of you already know Tuesday of last week, I was involved in a hit-and-run motorcycle accident. Car hit me on my motorcycle as I was turning onto my street. Literally a stone throw from Ray's door. And the unfortunate part of that is that the driver decided to not stick around, left the scene, and continued eastbound on 12th Street to his home. I was very fortunate to have survived, and only because this half-inch-thick piece of plastic kept my skull from beating the pavement. And I stayed awake through all of it in order to be able to accurately tell police the direction of travel that the offending vehicle went. Much later in the evening, it turns out that they were able to find him, and he was cited. My problem with this is that he was cited in municipal court. And per Wyoming statute Title 31-5-1101, such an act of leaving the scene with personal injury can be punished up to one year imprisonment and/or a $5,000 fine. You all know that in municipal court, the maximum fine would be $750 and no jail time. So here we have this offender who left me laying in the road with the possible risk of life-threatening injuries, and he's able to walk away with a slap on the wrist and a minimal fine. I think if council took the opportunity and asked the city attorney to review this statute, you would see that there's quite a discrepancy there. There is an opportunity for a city to make a policy change so that in the event that a future victim of a hit-and-run accident is left injured, and especially in the event where it's, the victim is exposed to all elements being, whether it's pedestrian or pedestrian vehicle or motorcycle, that this cases such as mine and others could be automatically referred to Circuit Court, where that potential jail time is, is the punitive arrangement that could be met. Obviously, that's up to the judge and the court to decide. But without being referred to Circuit Court, that isn't an option at this point.
Anything else, Ray?
I have had some pretty lack of communication from the police department, from the officers that took the report, trying to work through that. And I've, I pretty much had to go to all lengths to solve my own crime that I was a victim of. The police department has not responded to most of my calls. I ended up submitting an online complaint, and thankfully heard back from one of the officers yesterday after that. But, I mean, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, going door-to-door when I'm injured and asking neighbors if they've got cameras that may have caught this, and all because the officers didn't bother to inform me that they'd found the suspect and charged him. And if I'd known that Tuesday of last week, or even Wednesday, it would have saved me a lot of, a lot of trouble and heartache and pain. Like I said, I literally beat the street and door-to-door trying to solve this crime on my own until the suspect came forward and called me of his own accord and admitted his fault. But prior to that, I was having to do the work myself to solve this. And I don't think that's fair or right. I'm a very connected person of the community, but somebody else may not be. The next victim could be an out-of-towner that doesn't know anybody, and they'd have a hard time doing what I've done. But I appreciate your guys' time tonight. Hope to hear more about this and that you do actually look into it and make the changes that need to be changed.
So what I'll do, Ryan, is during the communicate, during this time, I think at the end of our, when we do council around the table, I'll have the, bring up the conversation. If we would have a conversation, we'll have direction to the attorney to see what his advice would be, number one. And then two, if we want to put something like this on a work session, to have a conversation. Is that fair to say, Mr. City Manager? Okay, council's, council okay with that? Does anybody have any questions for, for Mr. Step?
I do have the state statute number and city ordinance numbers written down, if he needs that, otherwise.
Did you want, you're good? Yeah, he's good. So let me just say, Eric, that Ryan's been my neighbor for, I don't know, 15 to almost 20 years. He's a great neighbor, I'm so glad. When I saw, I was, I was out of town, I was out of the country, and saw that, I was kind of trying to follow along a little bit. And so I was glad to hear that, you know, it was, it sounds like it was nasty, not easy. But we appreciate the, yeah, yeah.
It's nasty.
So I was glad to hear that you were safe and reasonably, and everything was good. So appreciate that. And an advocate for helmets, I do agree about helmets saving people's lives, too.
It's everybody's choice, and I...
I agree.
Took the opportunity to save myself, so...
Yep. We appreciate it. Thanks, Ryan. We'll be in touch. Yep. Any others who wish to speak to the council? Okay. Please read the consent agenda title.
Establish April 4th, 2023 as a public hearing date for consideration of an ordinance approving amendments to the Liquor License Code Sections 5.08.150 and 5.08.390.
Thank you. The Chair to entertain a motion to by minute action establish the public hearing date, just read. Moved by councillor Cathy, seconded by councillor Gamroth. Any abstentions or nay votes? Councillor Pollack? Okay, any others? All right, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With councillor Pollack's abstention noted and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of a real estate trade agreement with West Center Hospitality, D Center, and D Cap. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated March 17th, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Star, Casper Star Tribune dated March 21st, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thank you. We have an opportunity to consider a land exchange with respect to one of our private partner neighbors, if you will, along the Center Street corridor, wherein there's a mixture of property ownership in the subject area in question being demonstrated here on the exhibit in front of you tonight. This is an opportunity to, for the city, if you will, to obtain some land on, adjacent to the North Platte, where there is currently some pathway improvements located as well, as well as the opportunity to convert some publicly-held land into private sector hands for hopefully a higher and better use than what the, the city of Casper has used it historically. And so to go through a sort of a quick summary as it relates to what, what we're talking about here as far as what's being proposed in front of you tonight. The land in yellow, encircled in yellow, if you will, outlined in yellow is land that the city will obtain, land that also has public improvements on it, that currently is not held by the city. City will obtain this land. The city has the opportunity to also obtain access via what I would call an E Street extension located here. In return, the city will pave this and improve it in terms of general upkeep and repair that is needed currently. But the important point being that this will be permanent easement for the public to use in order to access what will hopefully be public land pursuant to your approval this evening. Furthermore, the city will also obtain south access, albeit through an easement only through here to also, you know, obtain access to this part of what will now become city property pursuant to your approval this evening. In exchange for what I just described, the private partners will obtain the land along C Street, south of Starbucks, to develop for retail purposes, if you will, and as well as have access to parking here on city, currently city-held property. With that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we will also have the opportunity to improve D Street in that our private property neighbors will provide us some expansion of D Street with property they are willing to deed to the city as well. A complicated exchange proposal that's being offered for the city's consideration this evening. But nonetheless, we're very excited with regard to the perpetual ownership of this property, which has never been owned by the city, although improved with regard to pathway improvements and access to the river that heretofore has not technically been given to the public. And so we're, we're hopeful that with this exchange, not only will the public's access to the river improve, but we're hopeful that private retail options will be leveraged as well.
All right, thank you so much. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the real estate trade agreement to please approach the lectern. Those who wish to speak in favor. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Paul Diamond, and I represent West Center Hospitality, D Center LLC, and D Cap LLC. And our goal here is to bring more people to Casper and bring more people to downtown. We are what we consider the gateway to downtown, coming straight down Center Street. We have brought in a tenant to the Old Town facility, the amusement center that has been vacant for a while. We've brought in a couple other tenants in our property up there. And this would enable us to develop property along Center Street that's been vacant. And it would also give the public more access to the river and property along the river. We have further plans, and maybe I could share, to bring in a restaurant to the property, which is called Boston's. It's the largest sit-down restaurant chain in Canada. They have over 400 locations, and they're very interested in coming. And we're also, who do I? Thank you very much. And we're also bringing in a new hotel to the property using an existing building there and converting it to a Fairfield by Marriott, which again, we believe will drive more activity in the city.
Great. Questions for Mr. Diamond? Yeah, councillor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And thanks, Paul, for coming to speak tonight. Out of curiosity, the addition of the Fairfield, what's the, what's the benefit to the entities that you represent of having a Fairfield and a Bass Western share the same space? Do they have different offerings?
They have different offerings. They have, people have different affiliations and loyalties. So by having multiple offerings, it will bring more people, and we have a pretty significant amount of meeting space. So our hope and expectation is that'll bring more meetings to town.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Diamond, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any others who wish to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in the real estate trade agreement, speak against the real estate, real estate trade agreement, to please approach the lectern. Those who wish to speak against. Okay, there being no others to speak for or against the real estate trade agreement, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair to entertain a motion to by resolution approve a real estate trade agreement between West Center Hospitality, R E LLC, D Center LLC, and D Cap LLC, and the city of Casper.
So moved. Second.
Moved by councillor Inga Breton, seconded by councillor Pollack. Discussion? Any discussion? Yeah, councillor Gemra.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. I guess I would just like to, you know, the city manager gave a great synopsis of the fact that we have improvements on that land, that is not city land. So, you know, obviously, there's a, you know, that's an issue. And so we'd like those improvements to be on city land. We just heard from Paul about some of the plans they have to continue development in that area. I know I've been excited to see the infusion of investment. That facility's been kind of sitting there for a few years, so I'm really excited about all the energy and the movement I see happening over there. And so I'm certainly in support of it. I guess I would just, I did see some articles earlier today, some folks with concerns. I'd just like to remind people, we will have three readings on this, and so plenty of opportunity for you to come, share your feedback. Thanks.
It's a resolution. I think it's just a resolution.
Oh, okay. Fair enough.
Councillor Pollack?
Thank you. I would just like to note, I saw, you know, some of the folks with concerns online, too, there weren't too many, a lot of folks really excited about the project as well. But I would just like to reiterate, I think this land swap makes, makes really good sense. We're, we're getting developable land into the hands of developers while securing public access to a public asset. So to me, it makes perfect sense. It's, it's a, it's a swap that accomplishes multiple goals at once. So I'm actually really enthusiastic about it. I don't see any, any reason for concern. I'm looking forward to both elements of the project being able to move forward.
Any others wish to discuss about it? Okay. Again, yeah, councillor Pollack took the words out of my mouth. I think it's exactly what we need. It's the continued development of that area, which needs it. It's a gateway off of I-25. I think it's a fantastic opportunity to take it to another level as we go down into our core of our city. I think it's fantastic, and it's a great investment. We appreciate you guys investing in our community. Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With councillor Bond voting aye and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Good luck, Mr. Diamond, thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of a new restaurant liquor license, number 17 to La Cucina. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from...
Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flor Tremel to J. Carter Napier dated March 6, 2023. Exhibit number two, liquor license application filed February 10, 2023. Exhibit number three, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated March 13, 2023. Exhibit number four, affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated March 14, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, this is an opportunity really for the owners of the La Cusina to continue to operate at their current location, until which time their new location is ready to move into and open for business.
Great. Thank you so much. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of new restaurant liquor license number seventeen to please approach the lectern. Those who wish to speak in favor. How you doing, Jim?
Good. How are you guys? Jim Childs, 1610 Brookview Drive. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Childs? Yeah, councillor Cathy.
When's your new place gonna be open?
August.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
Any others? Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Any others who wish to speak in favor? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of new restaurant liquor license number seventeen to please approach the lectern. Any in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the issuance of new restaurant liquor license number seventeen, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair to entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of new restaurant liquor license number seventeen to Child's Core DBA LA, excuse me, doing business as La Cusina Mexican Restaurant located at 321 East E Street. Moved by councillor Haskins, seconded by councillor Cathy. Amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With councillor Pollock abstaining and councillor Bond voting aye and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you so much. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the transfer of ownership for retail liquor license number thirty-seven to Charger Holdings LLC. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Mr. Vice Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flor Tremel to J. Carter Napier dated March 7, 2023. Exhibit number two, liquor license application filed February 9, 2023. Exhibit number three, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated March 13, 2023. Exhibit number four, affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated March 14, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, we are familiar with Charger Holdings. They were the original recipient of this particular liquor license back in 2016 when this license was originated. Indeed, this is one of those licenses that have the unique feature of being tied to a particular address, the address of which was stated earlier in the Clerk's Report. This particular motion returns this license back to Charger Holdings for their use at the approved address.
Great. Thank you. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number thirty-seven to please approach the lectern. Mr. Huff.
Yeah, I did a, did an experiment and it didn't work too good, so I kind of felt a little bit under duress when I did that transfer. I liked her fire. I liked how everything was going, but I think the lack of experience and the fact that I was getting a little pressure from the liquor people about not using it, having it open. So I did that, and now I'm, I love my neighborhood. I love the area. I still kept everything all up last summer and I want to continue to do so. I do like my neighborhood and I want somebody in there. It's just not gonna be me. I mean, I'm gonna be sixty-five years old here in November. I don't want to work at that kind of a business. That's not my style. I got a couple kids I gotta raise. I don't want them there. So I'm gonna find somebody. Got some interest, and frankly, I've kind of had to push it off to the side and pursue some other things here for a little while till this all settle down and then license transfers back. But I do have some people interested. We'll find out if they got the resources and the wherewithal to make it happen, at which point I'll go into some agreement with them and lease the place to them, or if somebody comes along and really wants the place, I'll sell it to them. But I've done a lot of my part and it's time for me to pass the torch as far as that goes. It's a beautiful facility. It doesn't need a lot of work, and I think somebody can go in there with a new mindset and a new game and make it go.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for John? Thanks, John. We appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Any others who wish to speak, wished to speak in favor? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number thirty-seven to please approach the lectern. Okay. There being no others to speak for or against the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number thirty-seven, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair to entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of ownership for retail liquor license number thirty-seven from 307 Repair Inc., doing business as Yellowstone Garage Bar and Grill located at 355 West Yellowstone, to Charger Holdings LLC, doing business as Charger Holdings LLC located at 355 West Yellowstone. Moved by councillor Cathy, seconded by councillor Jensen. Discussion. Councillor Gamroth.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank John for all the work you've done in the Old Yellowstone District, a huge force in that area town, and I just wanted to remind people that this liquor license is attached to that location. You can't use it anywhere else, so just wanted to make sure that was noted. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Any amendments? Okay. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With councillor Pollock abstaining and councillor Bond voting aye and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, councillor. Thanks, John. Good luck. Okay. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Casper Municipal Code, Chapter 1.04, General Provisions.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Inga Bretherton, seconded by councillor Gamroth. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Oh, hold on a second, sorry. Thanks, Brandy. Please record the vote.
With councillor Bond voting aye and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Eight A1, authorizing a contract for professional services with Baseline Engineering Corporation for the 2023 to 2027 closed bail fill monitoring and reporting project. Eight A2, authorizing an agreement with Installation and Service Company Incorporated for the 2023 CPU asphalt repair project. Eight A3, authorizing a contract between the Wyoming Department of Health, Behavioral Health Division, and the City of Casper for mental health services in support of, for first responders. Eight A4, authorizing the filing of applications with the Federal Transit Administration for federal transportation assistance. Eight A5, authorizing the filing of an application for a grant under forty-nine USC Chapter 53, Title 23, USC Section 5311, as amended by the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, Public Law Number 117-58, November 15, 2021, and other authorizing legislation to be enacted. Eight A6, authorizing the filing of an application for a grant under forty-nine USC Chapter 53, Title 23, USC Sections 5310 and 5339, as amended by the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, Public Law Number 117-58, November 15, 2021, and other authorizing legislation to be enacted. And eight A7, authorizing a contract for professional services with Peak Geo Solutions Incorporated for the 2023 through 2027 operation, maintenance, and monitoring services for the Casper closed bail fill gas collection and control system project.
Thank you. Chair to entertain a motion to adopt the consent at Jeddah items just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Pollock, seconded by councillor Gamroth. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items? Any abstentions or nay votes? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With councillor Bond voting aye and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we ask councillors to bring forward relevant concerns or on any items of interest. We'll start with you, councillor Bond, if that's okay.
I have nothing.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Cathy.
Thank you. Last Wednesday, attended the going away or retirement from the head of the Black River Trails for Angela Emery. She has put in many years of service there, leading that organization, and it was a good thank you and congratulations for everything you've done over the past years. At Water Board meeting earlier today, we went over their capital budget projects for the water treatment plant, which will be in excess of slightly $2 million for this year. Went to the chamber meeting. They elected new officers. That was at four o'clock. Am I missing anything else from the chamber meeting?
New CEO.
I missed her introduction, so go ahead.
We do have a new CEO over there that is starting. She has already started and she'll be here full-time. She bought a house out in Paradise Valley, so she's, we're gonna welcome her to the community from Cody, Wyoming, previous chamber director there. So she comes to us with a lot of experience. Her name is Tina, and I'm not even gonna attempt her last name, starts with an H, so we just go to, and she likes to refer to herself as Tina from the chamber. So Tina from the chamber, and her last name starts with H.
Thank you. Yep, I heard her on the phone, but I hadn't got the word that she was the new director, so thank you. And tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM, I have a CPU meeting here at City Hall. So let's get this over with. I gotta get to bed.
Councillor Haskins.
So I met with the Natrona County Health Department last Thursday. It sounds like there is going to be personnel funding issues. They may be coming to council requesting some assistance there, and thankfully, Carter's gonna help them with guidance on that because they weren't entirely sure how to go about asking us, so they asked me. I was like, yeah, no. But, so that's something we have, something to look forward to. It sounds like there are some serious funding issues for personnel, and they also, most of the new programs they've rolled out have been extremely successful, but if you're looking for the breastfeeding classes, it hasn't taken off yet, so there's still openings. We do have the new committee with the judge, but unfortunately, that was postponed today, so I'll be meeting with them on the 11th. Don't know what that entails yet, but we shall see. Other than that, it looks like the event center might be going on break for a minute. February is clearly when they are hopping, so cleaning time maybe? I don't know, but...
Thank you. Councillor Pollock.
Thank you very much. Last week, I had the Metro Task Force meeting. That continues to go while we're still, at this point, focusing on ordinance review and taking a look at some inconsistencies across the municipalities here and the other folks who are partnering with us on that task force to try to bring some consensus about what our ordinances should look like to help in efforts of animal control and sheltering. So it's still the focus of the group, and hopefully, we'll be seeing further developments there and eventually have some first actions to bring to you all from that committee coming soon. What else did I do? Oh, LGBTQ Advisory Committee on last Friday. We, what did we talk about? You were there, Ray. I'll let you give that update.
Forgot the agenda. I'll talk about it.
Fantastic. And then today, Regional Water, and Steve covered that. So yeah, some much-needed capital maintenance and improvements going on there, so nothing of note outside of that. Thanks.
Councillor Inga Bretherton.
Last week, I was unable to make the Contractor Board meeting. Tomorrow, I'm actually attending for the Casper College Government Day. Have been invited for that. And then I would also like to remind the public that we all are aware that there's potholes, and there's very large potholes. So we do have an app, 311 app, so if you see a large pothole, please just report that either on the city website or the app. They are definitely getting to them, some of the larger ones probably first, and then start working their way, but it was kind of a brutal winter, so it's, they're getting to them. That's it. Thank you.
Councillor Jensen.
All right. I got some stuff today. I got some stuff today, so. No meetings for the Old Yellowstone District last week, so nothing to report on that. I do want to do a shout-out for the Ford Wyoming Center. There's the Professional Bull Riders that are coming to town, so go support the Ford Wyoming Center and get tickets for that for April 1st. Also, over St. Patrick's Day weekend, a lot happening downtown over at David Street Station, so it was great to see everybody out there and the bagpipes and the Irish dancers and just a lot of families having fun on the green. So it was nice that they were downtown supporting the businesses and just encouraged people to keep on doing that and get down there. Those shop owners need you. And, let's see, Visit Casper has the first week going on of May is the National Travel and Tourism Week, so they're gonna be having a lot of offerings. If you check with their Facebook page or their website, visitcasper.com, you can partake in a lot of their events. Let's see, and I think that is it. That's all I got.
Councillor Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thanks councillor Cathy for the mention of Angela Emery's, you know, retirement. I think it was over twenty years, so huge contribution. We got to meet Rachel Spear, who's the new ED at our meeting last week. She was welcomed at my Rotary Club this week, so I'm glad to see her, you know, getting integrated into the community and looking forward to seeing what she does during her tenure there. Had a Casper Housing Authority Board meeting last Thursday. The Community Development Block Grant Funding that was, that we as a council accepted on behalf of both Casper Housing Authority and Wyoming Food For Thought has proven a little difficult to get released, but I wanted to thank our Community Development Director, Liz Becker. She's putting in a ton of time and effort into that, really instrumental in pushing that across the finish line, so thank you to her for her help. And Kim, the ED of the Casper Housing Authority, did make mention to the board that in the past several years, they've had sixty-seven of their tenants go on to purchase their own homes, first time, so just seeing a ton of success out of the people that, you know, start off at some of the facilities managed by that group and then working themselves into homeownership. And then lastly, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Stepp's comments to us earlier today, I'm very ignorant about when an incident gets referred to municipal court or circuit court, and so I would appreciate certainly some education, just some details about that. And then I believe state statute restricts the penalties that we can, you know, pass along in municipal court, but would love a little bit more information about that as well. So if we could get that on a future work session, I would greatly appreciate it.
So I'll just move, I'll just make that move right now to have that on something where we could have that on a work session, have this conversation, number one. we could have that on a work session, have this conversation, number one, and maybe look at that. I don't know if that's something we can do, Eric.
Mr. Vice Mayor, councillors, first of all, with regard to Mr. Stepp's incident, I was actually contacted by my deputy city attorney while we were sitting here. She indicated that that case has not been adjudicated and she is in the process of having those charges refiled in circuit court.
Good.
So I think certainly at a work session, you know, we could, and I could get with the chief, present on kind of how the charging determination.
Perfect.
Certainly give a little bit of a primer on what the jurisdiction in the municipal court is and when we're confronted with situations where there's maybe some aggravating circumstances, how we go about reviewing the case and determining whether or not it's more appropriate in circuit court versus municipal court. So I'd be happy to do that.
Is council okay with that presentation of it? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that good, Ryan?
Yep. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Appreciate it. Anything else, councillor?
I'm good. Thank you.
As councillor Pollack had mentioned, we had the LGBTQ meeting last week. We did go over several items, one of which we talked pretty extensively about Nicole Carlson. The HR manager came and chatted with us about what that looks like, how we talked about certain, how policies are within the city, how they work with pronouns and how the issues of respect and dignity when we work with people and being respectful in that manner. She took copious notes on looking at how they could make things more inclusive. Thank you. That was the word I was looking for. I was trying to search for it. To look, to try to make things more inclusive. And the language within that was a, that conversation that we had is, you know, how do we work towards that with the administration and being able to do it? And they were very open to it and it seemed like it would be very easy for us to move forward. Do you want to add to that?
I would just add that she noted that they haven't had any complaints filed in that vein within this organization, so that was great to hear and I think that the committee was encouraged by that news and, but yes, we had a great conversation with her.
Yeah, she had said that she had worked in an organization like Chili's, I think, is what she had worked in, that large. Maybe not once, but.
It wasn't Chili's, but I won't say what it was.
Oh, now I know who, now I know exactly who it was. It was not Chili's. Dang it! She had worked in a larger organization that had seen that, whereas, boy, I stuck my foot in my mouth right, right when I did that, didn't I? Jeez. But working in a larger organization but not seeing it in a city organization like this and it's been really, really, really good. So that's encouraging to hear that it has not happened, so we appreciated that, that comment. So it was not Chili's, Ryan. Don't want to get ourselves sued or anything for Pete's sakes. That's all I've got, Ryan, so we'll get that on the work session for you and we'll get that taken care of, so. All right. Yes, sir.
I would like to make a comment with regard to the potholes. We do have crews out currently patching potholes. If it does snow the next couple of days, they will have to stop, but please be aware of the city crews out on the streets and give them a berth because they are trying to fix and repair the streets. So make sure we watch out for the people that are out doing, doing what we want them to do. Please be aware of them.
Thank you, councillor. Notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have matters to discuss regarding litigation, therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn to an executive session and at the conclusion of the executive session to reconvene this regular meeting solely for purposes of adjournment for this regular meeting. Moved by councillor Cathy, seconded by councillor Inga Bretson. There being a majority of members present and a motion to adjourn to an executive session, having been moved and seconded and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, please cast your votes. Please record the vote.
With councillor Bond voting aye and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned to an executive session. Thank you and everyone be safe tonight.